Welcome you to the 2010 election road trip. I'm Nelson Jensen, the Director of Content and Programming for the Press Enterprise Company. And we would like to thank everyone here for participating in our sort of inaugural season of this. We are sponsored by the Press Enterprise, the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District, and Mount San Jacinto College. We are conducting 25 candidate forums around Western Riverside County this week. Today, we're here in Riverside. Yesterday, we were in Beaumont. Tomorrow, we will be in San Jacinto. And Thursday and Friday, we will be in Minifee. All of these forums will be streamed live here on PE.com and Ustream.tv. The videos also will be available on demand on PE.com on the Road Trip page of the politics area of the site. This tonight is our seventh forum of the day, our 11th of the two days. And for the next hour, we'll be focusing on the city of Corona and the council race. Corona has grown from its citrus beginnings to a prosperous city of more than 145,000 residents. It is one of a handful of cities in Riverside County that has its own police and fire departments. Corona's website touts, rather, an economic picture with more than 80,000 people working in the city. In this race for the council, there are four candidates, including three incumbents. We'll meet the candidates now, and in a moment, we will have them do two-minute introductory statements. The candidates are seated from my left to right in the order in which they appear on the ballot as set by the registrar of voters for the November 2 election. First is Jason Fox, a community volunteer; Stan Skipworth, a police chief and council member; Karen Spiegel, mayor and business owner; and Eugene Montanez, council member. Before we get into the questions, which we get from the newsroom of the Press Enterprise and from readers, we will first offer each candidate a chance for a two-minute opening statement. Carol Park in the front row is our timekeeper. She will signify the halfway mark of your statement and also as time is running out. We ask that you abide by the rules that we've discussed earlier. In addition, no name-calling or outbursts. And we will have a chance, it's not a debate, but we will have a chance for a closing statement. So if there's anything you need to, you know, just absolutely have to get in, there's an opportunity for that as well. All right, we'll start with Jason, two-minute opening statement.
Hello, my name is Jason Fox, and I'm your candidate for the Corona City Council. To give you some information about my background, I'm a veteran of Operation Desert Storm. I'm a very proud parent of a 16-year-old, a single parent here in Corona, and I care very deeply about the community in which I choose to raise him, which is one of the reasons why I'm running for city council. I'm running to oppose the current council because of their refusal to take a stand against job loss in the city. While the city has laid off over 200 city employees, which, you know, then taxpayers continue to pay for because they go on unemployment, the city manager, the police chief, and the fire chief have not taken pay cuts. In addition, while your water rates have gone up, all the incumbents have received campaign contributions from the water company. So I want voters to be aware of that. In addition, I believe my experience in the military provided me a source of strength and leadership. My experience working for Merrill Lynch on Wall Street has given me insight on how to grow businesses. And I think finally, what people, what they can expect from me is what I've learned from something Thomas Jefferson once said, and that's "The whole of government consists in the art of being honest." And if the voters of Corona can expect anything in regards to the budget and regards to what's going on in the city, I will be honest with the city. So thank you for your time.
Okay, Stan Skipworth?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stan Skipworth, and I'm running for city council for the city of Corona. I'd like to thank the Press Enterprise and PE.com for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'd like to share with you that my wife, Michelle, and I moved to Corona in 1992, and that was when we were beginning our family. Since that time, we now have added seven children to our family. We are deeply involved in a variety of activities and functions and programs throughout the city, and we find that Corona is truly a great place to live, a great place to raise a family, and a great place, as we know, to see businesses do very, very well in the region. I've been on the city council for four years now. I've dedicated myself to making sure that we support the city as a complete entity, to make sure that the city has the opportunity to succeed and thrive and be prepared for the future. I've dedicated my leadership skills and all of the learning that I have acquired throughout my professional career and throughout my life, and dedicated myself fully to the city of Corona and making sure that we have the very best community we can offer to those who work and live and play in our community. I'll continue to dedicate myself for the next four years, and therefore, I ask for your vote on November the 2nd, and I thank you.
Okay, Karen Spiegel?
Good evening. My name is Karen Spiegel. I'm currently serving as your mayor, and I've been in the city of Corona for 25 years. And I've got five grown adult children and a grandson. And I've been actively involved in many aspects of the community. As a business owner, we had electrical contracting business, and now we have a publishing and marketing business. So I've been very active in the business community, the Chamber of Commerce, and many other organizations that have been professional. I've also had my education, I have a bachelor's from Cal State Long Beach, as well as a master's from Pepperdine University. So I understand the struggles of education and the need for education, as well as delayed gratification. Prior to being elected council, 2002, I served six years as the city treasurer, so I'm very much of an understanding of the city budget and all the monetary issues that we have faced, both in good times, which we've had quite a few years of good times, and now some of the down times, and learning how we can make it through this in a very positive way. I'm actively involved in many organizations in town, from the Roll Up Your Sleeves grassroots, had many leadership roles, so I know how the community works. I think that the best way to get to know your community is by being involved. And the grassroots and the, from PTA to all the sports leagues, to the business community, to professional women organization, professional organizations, all the different things that I'm doing makes me feel very good that Corona is a great place to live, work, and play. And my goal is to continue to have that, that people feel safe in their homes, that people want to shop in Corona, and people want to call and proudly call Corona their home. My commitment today is even stronger than it was when I first ran. There's many more things that we want to accomplish in this town, and I know that Corona will keep it small-town friendliness even though we're a large city. Thank you. Remember to vote November 2nd.
Okay, thank you. Eugene Montanez?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eugene Montanez, and I want to thank the Press Enterprise also for hosting this. I think this is a great opportunity for the community to meet all of us, at least on the Internet. A little bit about myself, my family moved to Corona in 1964, so I've seen Corona grow a bit. Went all the way through elementary school and graduated Corona High and started a business. Had a business full-time since 1976 with my wife. We've been married 34 years and have a grown son who continues to live and work in the area as well. I served on the planning commission for eight years prior to being on the city council, so I saw a lot of the changes that have happened in Corona. South Corona, Dos Lagos, Eagle Glen, those were all built while I was on the planning commission or early on the city council. But recently, obviously with the way that we've seen the economy, the biggest focus is to grow jobs. And I think jobs are the only way that we will see Corona move ahead of other cities and be able to pull out of the recession as quickly as possible. We are ideally located with the 9115 freeway, and we are very desirable for businesses to locate there. So we've had great success the first few months of this year in actually getting over 1,000 jobs into the city, and I'm very proud to say that we've done that, and we continue to do that to get people working and living in Corona. I do appreciate the support and would appreciate your vote November 2nd as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll begin our questions with one for the challenger, Jason Fox. The question is, how will your personal leadership on the council benefit the city?
Well, I think leadership comes from experience, and I don't think you should discount the significance of my service in this country's, in this country's time of war. That'll prepare you for leadership. I challenge anybody to, you know, say that it doesn't. You know, I've also, while I was in the military, serving at March Air Force Base, I was named 1994 Supply Squadron Airmen of the Year. So I carried out my duties above and beyond what was required of me, and I can bring those skills and what I've learned in that experience to the city of Corona.
Okay, thank you. Slightly different version for the incumbents. We'll start with Eugene. How has your personal leadership on the council benefited the city?
Well, I think what I bring to the council and to the community is my business background in connection with the number of businesses that I am familiar with. Every day within our business, we interface with many different types of businesses, from at-home businesses to businesses with 100 to 500 employees. So I'm in the trenches every day, being able to interface with them. And having a business and meeting a payroll every single week gives you a unique perspective on what you need to do to budget and to make sure that both your business, the businesses in the community are well taken care of from the city's perspective, where the city will not provide or go with extra regulations to stymie business, but actually have the city be able to be a reason to have business grow. Thank you.
Okay, Karen Spiegel?
Leadership is the way we work with people, and I think that I bring to the table the ability to have an open-door policy. My phone number is always accessible. If I don't know the information, I will tell you and I will seek it out. We have plenty of people who are experts in their fields. We allow them to do their jobs, and that's who I utilize for my expertise is our employees who are out there in the trenches, working day-to-day with everybody. But I think that the open-door transparency, working very hard this year on getting our agendas where they're all online with the backup information so that there's nothing that is not available to our residents. This is your city. We work for you, and our job is to meet your needs the best we can with the tools that we have. And so our job is to make sure our toolboxes are full and that we can share as much that we can to make your quality of life and your neighborhood the type of community that you want to live in, because we want to have a great community to live, work, and play.
Okay, Stan Skipworth. How has your leadership on the council benefited the city?
Leadership, leadership is important when it is developed and created over time. In fact, so much so that when leadership has the ability to be created with a diverse background and a multitude of different applications in different settings, working in different challenges, working with different groups of people, you find that leadership is at its strongest and at its best. I've had the opportunity to serve the great people of Corona for the last four years, and I've learned a great deal as my community, the same community I share with all the people in Corona, have gone through the last four years. Things that we've looked at as challenges and yet opportunities as well, things we've been able to grow from and things we've been able to work through. I'll continue to apply that same learning and that same leadership as we go into the next four years and make sure that Corona arrives at its, at its destination of continuing to be a strong community, a community of the future, and a community of great opportunity.
Okay, thank you. This next question, we'll start first with Stan. If elected, what is your top priority for the city?
My number-one priority for the, for the city of Corona is its success and its future. I'm dedicated to seeing that Corona achieves all of its goals. It has been a challenging last few years, but the great thing about the proactive nature of our local government is we've responded to these shifting indicators out there on the national and global scene, and Corona has been proactive, in fact, in mitigating its exposure to a great many challenges and challenges specifically with our economy. The reason that we need to continue to work toward that is because Corona will be, once again, vibrant, and it's going to show more signs as it already has in the recent past. We'll continue to work toward that, and we'll continue to grow our community and provide the economic development to support ourselves and bring greater strength throughout our region.
Jason, what will be your top priority?
My top priority will be growing the service sector of the local economy. In addition to calling for, you know, pay cuts for city, some city leaders like the city manager, the police, police chief, and the fire chief. All of us need to make sacrifices, including them. I don't think they're above having to make a sacrifice in these hard times. It doesn't make sense to give out, you know, multi-year contracts to unions when we don't know year-to-year what the revenue in the city is going to be in it. So my top priority for the city would be to grow the service sector of the economy. I would like to bring another hospital into Corona because there's not enough, you know, there's not enough here in case there's a disaster should occur, like an earthquake. We only have about 17 emergency beds in the emergency room. So those would be my focuses of growing the Corona community and my top priorities as a candidate.
Okay, Eugene, what would be your top priority?
My top priority right now, and has been for the last year at least, is really to produce jobs and not just jobs that are warehouse or low-paying jobs, but jobs that are white-collar and jobs that are providing higher wages so that some of our residents can work within the city that they live and not have to get on the freeway to actually leave Corona. Corona has the highest percentage of jobs of, per two-population of any city in the inland empire, and of our jobs that we do have, they are much higher-paying jobs than a lot of other cities in the inland empire as well. So my goal is to really get the number of jobs up. We actually do have businesses that are doing very well in the community. We still have construction going on. For instance, we have an automobile museum under construction that will be opening, and a number of other businesses that are prospering during this time. So really interfacing with them and really producing the jobs that our community needs.
Okay, thank you. Karen, what will be your top priority?
My top priority is to continue giving the quality of life that we all deserve, and that has many areas, so it's not one. But in order to enhance the quality of life, it is to allow us the opportunity to drive freely through our town. So transportation is a big issue. We're working on the expansion of the 91 freeway, but that's not the only answer. The answer includes bringing jobs to get people off the freeway. The quality of life is continued to service with public safety because we have to feel safe in our homes. And the quality of life includes the opportunities for our children and for our adults, educational and every other aspect, to make us want to be proud that Corona is our home. So transportation is a very key factor, and transportation includes bringing the jobs to town and keeping our public safety up so our businesses feel safe, and revenues into our city that give us the taxes that we need as a priority, so that is the business community also.
Okay, Karen, you get to go first on this next one. Obviously, in this recession, cities have seen fewer revenue, less revenue, rather, between property taxes, sales taxes. Cities, including Corona, have laid off employees and drastically cut budgets. What can the city do to maintain those public services while balancing the budget?
Well, we've, we were ahead of the game by most people, most cities. We started laying off and looking at our budgetary concerns back in October of 2008, when we made our first real move with layoffs. We've worked with our unions. They have given many concessions. They're working well with our cities. Our management staff, including city manager, have taken pay cuts. We've had many things that have happened, and our economic development department is doing some very creative, innovative things to bring business to community, to get some revenues in, because there's no one single answer. It takes a whole score of things to continue to do to keep our budget. Right now, we're looking out at three to five years, as well as right now, we're balanced budget this year and next year, and we always look into the future. And that's where Corona's always been ahead, is because we don't wait to the last minute. And so we'll continue looking for jobs with revenue coming into the city, as well as working with all our employees, and being innovative and creative, because that's the most important.
Okay, Eugene, what can the city do to maintain public services while balancing a tough budget?
Well, as Karen mentioned, we were one of the first cities to do staff reductions. It was not anything that any of us really wanted to do, but it was something that we knew we had to do. We looked at where we were at, where the revenues were coming, and where the projections were on property tax. And contrary to what I think some people in other cities may have done, is our reductions actually went from the top and the middle. We actually eliminated two department heads positions completely. We eliminated an assistant city manager position, and we eliminated a number of other middle-management positions. So the positions that we did cut were not just the last-in, first-out, as some cities and companies do. So that's one of the ways we were able to get the budget back in line as quickly as possible and to still maintain services. Thank you.
Okay, Stan?
Well, as has been mentioned, Corona has taken a very proactive process in responding to the shift in the economic conditions that we've had over the last few years. And as has been mentioned, we have looked at our staff reductions, not, again, not at the entry-level employees, but rather at middle and upper-management positions, which give us the greater benefit of being able to recapture control of a very, very limited budget during these economic times. I think that shows a couple of different things. One is it shows our forecasting ability has been quite strong in that regard over the last few years. And secondly, it demonstrates a very strong commitment by all of those involved with our local government in the city of Corona, working together to come together for these types of solutions and better position the city and our services that we will be able to continue to provide well into the future. And I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud of the relationships that we have in making sure those decisions are the very best informed that we can make.
Okay, Jason?
When looking at the budget, once again, when looking at the budget, most people have their own interest, depending on what department within the city you're talking about. And I think what's missing on the council is somebody who is unbiased as to what departments should be cut, as to where layoffs could be made and where concessions have been made. I know the police force had a concession by not taking a pay raise, but I don't believe they took pay cuts unless the council records are wrong. So that's, you know, that's how I respond to that.
Okay, the next question, we are going to go to Karen Spiegel first. Executive municipal pay has been in the news a lot lately. Councils in many cities, including this region, have defended the practice, saying they need to pay high salaries with significant benefits in order to attract the best management candidates. With the limited number of those top positions available in the region, why won't lower salary and benefit packages work?
Well, one thing that's not mentioned is that running a city the size of ours, when we hired our city manager with over 1,000 employees, you go to a corporation, and let's fairly trade and look at the salaries from a corporation, what the package benefits are, and they are, they are equal. We are not overpaying. So if you go to the corporate world, it is actually lower pay. And I do believe that you, I hate saying it that way, but you get what you pay for, and if we pay too low, it compacts and it brings everybody's salaries down. And yes, some people feel that there is overabundance of salaries. I think that the city of Corona deserves to get the best employees that we have, and I think that there is a little bit overzealous on picking and choosing the corporate or the city managers and all the top people in the city. And I feel that Corona, I'm proud to say that we're within the ballpark, we pay adequately, and we get what we pay, and he has not taken a pay raise in a couple of years, so he's really on to it.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about the time, I didn't see that. Jason, with the limited number of those municipal executive positions available in the region, why won't lower salary and benefit packages work?
I don't, I don't see why lowering salaries wouldn't work, and I don't see why Corona would need to have to go outside their community to fill those positions. I think we can find people in the city who need a job and would work for a lower salary than what's commensatory right now. Most people are struggling in our community, and a lot of the problems we have were caused, maybe, you know, in Washington or on Wall Street, but they're here now. And the only way we're going to deal with it is by doing it together. And I don't think you need to compete with corporations when corporations also get tax breaks for sending jobs out of the country. So I think if somebody's interested in serving the city, a lower, a lower salary would be one way of serving the city.
Okay, Eugene, why won't lower salary and benefit packages work?
Actually, I think with the recent publicity for city manager pay and overpay in some areas, I think it will. I think you will see a downward trend of city manager pay and city manager benefits. I am proud to say that Corona city manager salary has not made the front page of the newspaper, the Press Enterprise, or the LA Times, so I think that's a good thing. But I do think that you will see a downward trend in pay and benefits. But, you know, I'm very proud to say that our city manager that we have right now was homegrown. He went to school in Riverside, graduated high school in Riverside, and has worked for the city of Corona over 20 years, starting as a, in the planning department and working his way up to planning department manager, up to assistant city manager and city manager. And that's something that I think is great, someone that knows the insides of our city and is able to do that, and respects the fact that he is making a sizable sum now. So, and he has not asked for extra money.
Okay, Stan?
I strongly believe that those communities who have been asked to respond to comment on the level of compensation for their city managers, and those figures have appeared to be high, they'll have to respond to why they chose to compensate their city managers at those levels. As recent news reports have indicated, the city of Corona seems to be very much within the middle range of compensation, and I think rightly so. The figure does reflect the level of responsibility, the type of performance that the city of Corona needs in terms of leadership, and be able to look into the future and identify what our community will need and what services to preserve and to emphasize into the future. And it also recognizes, I think rightly so, Corona's place and its important place within the region, and Corona will continue to maintain that important place. And having somebody of the skill set that we currently have, we're very fortunate, and I think we'll continue to be in that position because of the fact that we've rightly positioned and compensated our chief executive.
Okay, the next question, we'll begin with Eugene. What is the appropriate level of compensation to serve on a city council and affiliated boards, whether they be regional transportation groups or other legislative bodies?
Well, I think the responsible compensation is something that really needs to be decided upon by possibly a community organization or a community committee to look at how much time is involved. As a city grows, our compensation, for instance, has grown very slowly compared to the amount of time that's take, that takes to be on the city council, and then also the year that you serve as mayor. And so unless someone is independently wealthy, it's very hard for someone to take the time and really devote the time they need to, to do the job, once you get to a city of 150,000 like Corona. So I'm not sure quite what the answer is. I would say it's probably, to be fair, a little bit more than a size salary that we currently get right now. We get $800 a month, but I think $100,000 a year is a bit high. So probably somewhere in between there, and I think that would be up for discussion, but it needs to be an open discussion in the community.
Okay, Karen?
The city of Corona is a general law city, and right now, we are currently dictated by the state of California. And they have the amount set in law by the size of the city. And as Eugene mentioned, that we grew up to 150,000. We just recently went up from 6 to 800. The hours that you put in are surprising, even if you just attend meetings and some of the committee meetings. It is a lot of time, and the expectations from the residents is tremendous. I don't think people realize that this is a part-time job and we're paid a part-time pay, actually not even part-time. And yes, it is a civic duty. We choose to do this, and I certainly would continue to do it if there is no pay increase and even if there's a pay decrease, because I thoroughly enjoy what I do. But you also have the, the challenge that you can't encourage all because it takes a lot of time, and some people just can't afford to take away time from their job to do this. So I think to be fair to the community, to offer a wider variety of people coming to the table, we may need to reconsider that.
Okay, Stan, same question?
Well, a few months ago, the city of Corona was notified by the state that our population had officially exceeded 150,000. had officially exceeded 150,000 people. And because of that, pursuant to California government code, we had the ability to opt for an increase in our monthly stipends as members of the city council. I chose not to accept that stipend increase. I maintain my current stipend is $600 a month. My reasons are personal to myself, my colleagues are theirs. I don't know what the right amount is, but I do subscribe to what existing law prescribes or provides for sitting council members or other elected officials. And I see that as an elective compensation, and therefore that's why I exercised the choice that I did. I think that the current California law does provide for an appropriate salary range or stipend range, if you will, and I think that we are right to consider, or right to continue abiding by the protocols according to that.
Jason?
I, unlike the incumbents, I'm the only member of this community who's a disabled, or the only member of this election who's a disabled veteran. And to translate what that means to the people of Corona, that means you get to live your life in poverty. So the extra $800 a month or so that I would make on the city council, that would lift me out of poverty. So yeah, it's great, I'll take it.
Okay. Jason, you can answer this next question first. Public service is a very time-consuming duty. How do you plan to manage your other obligations with your council duties?
Well, my only other obligation, you know, professionally, well, I have my son to raise, but professionally, this is pretty much what I'm doing with my time. Like I said, I collect a pension because I'm a disabled veteran. I don't like what I've seen from all three levels of my government, and that's why I'm opposing the current power structure.
Okay. Stan? Same question. How would you manage your obligations along with your council duties?
Well, since first being elected to the Corona City Council in November of 2006, I've been doing just that. I've been managing my time, I think, very effectively. I've been very directly involved in the goings-on of the city of Corona, the community of Corona, meeting with the people, attending very, a variety of events, actively working on a variety of issues and concerns and challenges that our community has been taken up on. But at the same time, I've been able to maintain my professional responsibilities. In fact, my current assignment actually came during the term that I'm currently serving. And so I think I've been able to demonstrate a very effective balance of my local responsibilities here in the community, my professional responsibilities, and above all else, being a part of my family and raising my children along with my wife. So I would expect to be able to continue to do that at a very high level.
Karen?
I think with any of us, priorities and balancing, you have to sit down and you pencil it out. And we do that as a family, because my family does come first. Family has to come before your civic duties because they're going to be there long after we leave office. So with five children, when I was, they were all in school when I was first running and as treasurer, and we used to balance everything and still take my kids over to Norco College, so I still balance them today. So family is the most important. And of course, I can't bite the hand that feeds our family, and so there's many times I'm doing work at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, taking care of my business. So it's learning to balance your priorities, and then of course, council, you see me out in the community, I attend as many events as I possibly can, I'm at many organizations, many regional committees, and that's very important because the representation of Corona in the region is one of my top priorities in making sure that Corona is out there and seen, because we have so much things happening. And it's called balancing priorities.
Okay. Eugene?
Thank you. It, I guess I'm very fortunate, our business allows me, because my wife is there when I'm not, to actually operate. And so I am able to go and do meetings, whether it's local or regional meetings, because of that. And without having the support of my wife and my family, there would be no way to do that. But that was a decision we made, when we, when we made the decision that I would be able to run originally for city council, was the time constraints that would be needed. And you do have to look at that ahead of time, and you do have to agree that there is a way to do it, and there is, there is definitely a balancing act that is necessary.
Okay. Eugene, you can answer this question first. A city police officer was on paid administrative leave for at least 10 months during an investigation, in essence, being paid money, public money not to work. What can the council do to limit this type of public expenditure?
Well, when you get into an issue like that, that is definitely an employee personnel issue, and it's something that we cannot comment on, nor is it anything that we can actually intervene in. So there are times when, from the outside, something may look a bit odd, it may not appear to be the way that you would think, but we trust our professionals to continue on with what they need to do to do their jobs properly. And when it comes to personnel matter, that's something that we have to stay out of, just in deference to the process. And there is a process involved, you have to follow that process all the way through. Everybody is assumed innocent, and you go through that process, and you let the professionals do their job.
Okay. Karen?
This particular situation's not the first time, maybe the length is a little abnormal, but we do have employee, we are employers, we have lots of employees. And it's an HR, it's a human resource situation, and our job is not to involve ourselves in employee issues. In fact, you wouldn't want anybody involved in your employee issues and make that on the front page of the paper, because you are innocent during the process. And because you're innocent, you're paid until such time that a decision is made. And our job is to make sure that our employees are taken care of through the proper channels with our city manager, as well as the city. And the city is something that we are responsible for. So we do a balancing act of making sure that our employees are taken care of as well as the city. And this is just a personnel issue, it happens, maybe not this length of time, it's a little longer than normal, but it's not abnormal, it happens in cities all over. It's just this particular one, had somebody go to the press and get it advertised.
Okay. Stan?
Well, I'm, I'm in the industry, and I understand the frustrations that come with this type of investigation that might carry on for quite a long time. I think it's important to remember that as elected officials and representing a local form of government, our job is, has been alluded to earlier, our job is to make sure that all of the processes are preserved and that all of the legal functions of carrying out a particular personnel investigation are adhered to, and make sure that when the case is finally completed, that the proper form and the proper delivery of any type of adjudication or discipline that might arise from that takes its proper shape and has full closure, and in turn, doesn't expose the city later on to any other type of concerns because it was mishandled in any type of way. I think that's a very important part of what we have to do. And as we do that, I think we demonstrate a very professional environment, and we respond to concerns and handle them appropriately.
Okay. Jason?
I think it's important for this, the people of the city to know that, without commenting on the actual case, that the reason why a police officer can collect 10 months of pay while he's not there is because the unions have a contract with the city, and it's the people who are currently on the council who approved those provisions in the contract. So my answer would be not to be, you know, to be more reasonable in terms of time that we, we come to investigate matters.
Okay. We'll start with Jason on this question. Corona is one of a handful of cities in Riverside County that not only funds but manages its own independent police and fire departments. With growing pressures on the budgets from salaries, benefits, and pension obligations, how realistic is it to maintain this level of service?
It's not realistic to maintain this level of service unless business starts to grow. And the problem and the frustration in the communities is that when fewer people have more percentage of the wealth, there's less people willing to risk and less people willing to invest. And what Corona needs to be doing is being proactive in getting people to invest in this community, bringing their businesses here and showing them that it's a place that they can prosper.
Okay. Eugene?
I do think that it's important to have the ability to have local control. I think a smaller city definitely would have issues with maintaining their own police and fire, but I think the size of the city that Corona now is dictates the fact that we can have and should have our own police and fire, because we're able to have our police officers, our firefighters, that have actually grown up in Corona, they know the city, they know the residents, and I think that's important. I think, you know, when you have a larger institution running your public service and they rotate between city or between areas within the county, you lose that personal touch. And I think that's something that is one of the reasons why Corona is one of the safest cities of cities over 100,000, is because we have that personal touch and we have the ability to have our officers, our firefighters, know our city.
Okay. Karen, how realistic is it to maintain this level of service for these independent police and fire departments?
It's all in relationship building, and that goes along with the quality of life that we as residents deserve. And Corona residents deserve to feel safe in their homes and know that someone's going to be there when they have an emergency and they will be responded to. And that is the number one priority. And our city, our size of 150,000 people, if we were to contract out, we would lose our control of our city. And I think it's very important that we do have control, because public safety is one of the number one things that people look for when they come to Corona, as well as businesses, when they have things happen in their businesses. They want to have the response. You don't have that control, you don't have the ability to dictate that when you use contracts with either Cal Fire or the Sheriff Department or anything else. So I think it's very, very important, it's workable, we have our employees know that, feel that, and desire that. That's why they're working with us with concessions and working with their raises. So it is workable.
Okay. Stan?
I think this is an issue of confidence. It's confidence in the people of the city of Corona, knowing that they're being well protected by their police and fire departments around the clock, 365 days a year. And I think one of the reasons that this is such a prevailing issue, and why it's so essential that we continue to preserve our existing public safety departments, is because as Corona has grown, it's grown not only in size, not only in population, not only in its landmass, but Corona has grown into a much more sophisticated community. We have high-rise structures now, we have diverse structures, we have corporations and businesses, manufacturing, things of that nature, that make effective and safe responses something that's very important. It's not just a matter of having personnel, and it's not just a matter of having the right equipment, it's the training that's gone into the personnel who use that equipment to make a safe and effective response to a fire or other hazardous condition or a concern for criminal activity, and do it in a way knowing what's best for that particular area. And in our community, we've addressed those specifically.
Okay. Stan, we'll go to you first for this question. Corona recently opened a couple of new industrial spaces and has attracted several manufacturers and distributors in the past year. What can the city do to attract more high-paying jobs? How do you do that?
Well, I think one of the things that's demonstrated our, our commitment to a more diverse workforce being attracted to the city of Corona, is a lot of the program that's gone on with our economic development department, and reaching out to corporations who are looking for an expanded business presence, or looking to relocate headquarters or other business operations within this region of California or this region of the nation. And in fact, we've done a great job of attracting those types of corporations. Indeed, a lot of manufacturing and a lot of other like industries have come here, but because of the commitment that we've had to our professional office space and other commercial properties, we're offering the opportunity for people to come here, bring their businesses here in an entirely different way. And I think it's going to be the, I think we're going to be very much out in the forward area of the new types of businesses that come to the area, especially in the professional sector.
Okay. Karen, what can the city do to attract more high-paying jobs?
Well, we've got the advantage that we had some leaders before us that have done a great foundation. We have no one type of business that we rely solely on, as some communities do. We have a pie that's very well divided up with manufacturing, with retail, with, with high-tech and the difference. Now, of course, our high-tech and the higher-paying jobs is the area that we're focusing on. We have a great economic development department with Team Corona that go out and seek these out. And businesses now come to us because of our reputation, our location. Corona has a great location with the 15 and 91, and many other advantages, and we work very hard on customer service. And when businesses know that we take their hand and we'll work through, getting them through the process, we actually have a great reputation in the business community. So it really is, it's seeking them out and offering them an awful lot that Corona has, because we do offer a tremendous amount for business community.
Okay. Jason, what can the city do to attract more high-paying jobs?
Well, the first thing the city needs to do is to study the economy, look at the demand for labor, and look at what jobs within that study are needed. And those are the type of businesses that Corona needs to attract. Like I said, I think that the, if I was elected in office, one of the priorities as far as building the, the community, one of the biggest demands in, in the country, not just, you know, here locally, is the demand for health care. And I think with the, with the growth in population, the city's experienced, the city's ill-equipped to handle an emergency. So I think building another hospital is something the city needs to consider and, you know, pretty soon.
Eugene?
Thank you. Well, there's a couple of things. It goes back partly to when I was on the planning commission. When you look at some of the buildings in Corona, they appear to be tilt-up industrial buildings like you see in a lot of other communities, but one of the things that we required them to do was to provide more parking and more land area, so that it was not as conducive to use some of those buildings just for warehousing. A lot of those industrial buildings are used for manufacturing. We have everything from aerospace to other high-tech businesses within those buildings, and from the outward looks, they look just like a normal warehouse that you might see in another community. We've been able to grow a number of corporate headquarters. We have Lucas Oil, we have Anchor Blue, Hanson's with Monster Drinks, Troy Lee Designs, Watson Pharmaceuticals, West Coast Customs, all of those that have started out smaller and grown within the community and span many different buildings now, and retention is a big part, not just attraction.
Okay. This next question, we'll start with Jason. What should Corona's role be in improving traffic flow and commuting options, not just in the city, but in the region?
Well, I think you have to understand the impact of economic development on the city when you, when you develop or redevelop areas, you have to look at how, how that's going to affect traffic, not just in the city, but on the freeway as well. And so you want to make sure that, you want to make sure that traffic, you know, it's, in all reality, there's not much the city can do because of the population, except build more roads, and that's going to cost more money. So who's going to pay for that? Being realistically about, speaking realistically about it. So like I said, there's, I know there's some projects on the table with the expansion of the 91, and then there's the Foothill Corridor over pass, but there's not much the city council can do other than building more roads to ease the traffic.
Okay.
Eugene, same question. What should Corona's role be in improving traffic flow and commuting options, not just in the city, but in the region?
Well, regionally, I think it's evident that Corona is a funnel that the entire region funnels through to go through the Santa Ana Canyon to Orange County, and that is a huge, huge problem. I've been on the Tri-Tunnel Express Committee even before I was on the council to try to be a proponent of a tunnel or a set of tunnels from Corona to Irvine, and to have an alternate corridor. That combined with expanding the 91 freeway will help, but until we have an alternative corridor to Orange County that provides both access for our residents there and the residents from Orange County to have access to Ontario Airport, for instance, our area will continue to be gridlocked at times. And if we have a tanker truck fire in the canyon, plane crash, we'll live through all the same situations that we've had up till now.
Okay. Karen, what's Corona's, what should be Corona's role in traffic flow and commuting options, not just in the city, but in the region?
Our role needs to continue to be active participation and being very vocal and making sure that the dollars that are done regional come to our city to help, because the traffic that we experience on the 91 and the 15 are not Corona residents all. There are many residents coming from Banning and Beaumont and further out, coming through Corona into Orange County and LA County. And it's critical that we, the county regionally helps to do this, and we've done And it's critical that we, the county regionally helps to do this, and we've done that. We have been very vocal, we've been actively involved. We also have the, so we have the expansion of the 91 freeway that's moving forward. We do have the 15 widening coming up in the near future. We have the 71-91 connector being done right now, this weekend it begins. We have the Foothill Parkway going through, but it's also our transit. I've been on Transit Board for eight years. We have the high-speed rail I've been actively involved on because we need to have the ability to have the high-speed rail down the 15 corridor. So there's many things and jobs to get people off the freeway. So it's no one answer, it's everything together.
Thank you. Stan?
Well, that's exactly it. It's going to take a blend of a variety of different options and bringing them together in an intelligent way, not only for the way that they're being used now, but how they're going to be utilized in the future. And traffic and transportation truly are two very distinct things for the city of Corona. Traffic first and foremost, not only for our surface streets, but also our major freeway system that Corona serves as a destination or crossroads, if you will. But also looking at our transportation, looking at mass transit, looking at ways to expand our MetroLink, our bus lines, our local shuttle services throughout the city, and looking also at the future of expanding those services and being able to get people to and from locations beyond the city of Corona. But it also comes back to adding the component of economic development and bringing a greater, diverse workforce to Corona so that we can lessen the need for these types of transportation issues. I'm the only commuter up here on this panel tonight. I've been on the 91 freeway for better than 20 years. I understand those challenges. I'll continue to work toward that.
Okay, we're going to just do a shorter answer here. We're going to limit it to 30 seconds. What's one thing, Stan, we'll start with you, and look into your crystal ball and tell us one thing that will be different about the city Corona in 15 years?
I don't know if it'll be different, but it'll be even more clear that in 15 years, the city of Corona will be the type of community people will find as a community of choice, a community to want to live in, a community where they're going to want to work in, a community where they're going to want to have their business. Corona already has those basic elements. Corona has already demonstrated for many, many years, this is a preferred community in Southern California. This is a community that has a great many things that address quality of life questions that families and people who want to come here have.
Okay, Karen?
What's one thing that you can see different about Corona in 15 years?
A continued sense of a hometown feeling, even though we're a big city. And it all goes back to quality of life. It's the things that people want to have in their city that make us want to stay here and not just have our families and the kids all leave. But everybody comes back and it's one of those hometown feelings that's going to have all the things that a community that we all want and people being actively involved. And that's the most important thing is the involvement in our community.
Okay, Jason, what's one thing that you will see different about Corona 15 years from now?
Realistically speaking, I think the first thing you can expect is that the population's going to continue to grow and that city services will, you know, need to meet all those residents' needs. Will we continue to prosper? I think if you put me in office, I think we will. I'll find a way to grow the businesses. I'll deal with the unions and, you know, make sure that the parks are someplace you'd want to be and...
Okay, thank you. Eugene, what's one thing that you can see different about Corona in 15 years?
In my crystal ball, I see Corona being one of the very first urban suburban cities. I think you'll see a lot more of a urban feel, you'll see more multi-story buildings, and you'll see people commuting to Corona and Corona being a driver for the inland empire.
Okay, same relatively short answer here. We'll begin with Karen. If you could change one thing about Corona tomorrow, what would that be?
One thing? Gosh, I think it would be the transportation and making, if I could change it tomorrow, we'd find an alternative corridor that would work, be cost-effective, to help eliminate some of the traffic hassles because with the traffic comes many things with public safety and everything else that traffic and congestion does to our community.
Okay. Eugene?
If I could change one thing, it would be to have the tunnels to Orange County be completed. So it would be done not just in my lifetime, but it would already be done. That would be my ultimate dream.
Okay, Jason, one thing you could change tomorrow, what would it be?
I would say the city council.
Okay, Stan?
I think the one thing I would like to add, wake up tomorrow, is have more facilities and more programming for our families, something that we had to pull back on a bit and I'd like to restore that and then add to that. And that'd be the immediate change I'd like to give back to the families of our great city.
Okay, that ends our question-answer session. We're going to do the closing statements for one minute, and we're going to do it in the reverse order that we began. So we will start with Eugene Montanez, one minute.
Okay, thank you. I'll reiterate my theme, which is jobs, jobs, and jobs. Actually, watching the traffic report earlier this week, I was amazed. I don't know if anyone else heard the news, there was actually slowdown on the eastbound 91 freeway. And the commentator said, "Wow, the people are traveling the opposite direction." And she thought it was a great idea, and so do I. I think by having a traffic jam going into Corona is a good thing. I've continued to promote the city, both locally and regionally, and I think that's important for us to grow the businesses. I will still strive to work on an alternate corridor, whether it's a tunnel or going over the hills, but I think we definitely need to have that. And also, I'd like to see us continue to work towards, at least considering a charter city and the freedom that that might offer from being under the auspices of the state. As we know, the state may not be the best guardian for cities. Thank you.
Okay, Karen Spiegel?
Again, thank you for this opportunity today. I want to be able to continue some of the programs that we've started. This year, we started a Healthy Corona that I've been very proud of. We started a Lighten Up Corona Weight Loser Program, as well as all these business wellness programs and many other things that are just beginning. I'd like to help get that to fruition. We also have been focusing the last few years on the veterans and honoring our current military with the Military Banner Program in the city. We're putting over 80 more up come November. So it's really exciting that we're honoring our veterans with a Veterans Memorial that we've been working on now for almost 10 years. Been actively involved in that. And of course, the transportation, which you've heard many times tonight. Transportation to me is a very important aspect. And with that comes the mass transit, the job opportunity, economic development, and everything else that all leads to offering a good quality of life so people like to live, work, and play in Corona.
Stan Kipworth?
Thank you once again for the opportunity to be here this evening and to speak to all the great people of the city of Corona. I've had the great privilege of being part of your city council for the last four years, and I'm asking for your vote on November the 2nd to serve you into the next four years. Corona is a terrific community. It's a community made up of a lot of wonderful things. I want to continue to do what I can to keep that in place and add to it. There's a lot to be worked on. We're going to work on it together, as you've seen, not only within the city government but around the community. People are dedicated to the same goal. And I assure you that I will give you everything I have and all my energy to allow us to achieve our goals at the highest. Thank you.
Jason Cox?
I'd like to applaud our mayor's efforts in honoring our veterans, although I think they deserve more than just having their picture put up. I believe they're entitled to services when they come home and they're done fighting for your freedom. And, you know, the mayor doesn't believe the city should offer those type of services to veterans. I do. I'm the only person here who can really offer you choice. You know, the reason why they're endorsed by the unions is because they're beholden to them and their needs. Just look at, you know, you've got a police officer who's been off duty for 10 months and been getting paid. Somebody approved those provisions in the union contract. Your water rates have gone up. I didn't vote to raise your water rates, but all of my opponents here have taken money from the water company for their vote. So if you want to continue to live in a community where they raise your water and they pay you lip service, then vote for the incumbents. I'm not your guy.
All right, thank you very much, and good luck to all of our candidates. We want to thank you for joining us in the audience tonight. We'd also like to thank those of you watching on PE.com. You can also watch this video on demand, as I mentioned, on the Election Road Trip portion of our politics site. Once again, we'd like to thank our timekeeper, Carol Park, and our production crew, Adam Drexler, Angel Ortiz, Dave Kaufman, and Louis Amistoy. Don't forget to vote on November 2nd, and you can join us live on PE.com. We will have an election show live all evening. And as those results trickle in at a very slow pace, as they often do, we will go into the November 3rd and have a full recap show on November 3rd as well. Again, thank you, everybody, for the participation. For the Press Enterprise, I'm Nels Jensen.